All the board meeting of District 721 to order. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Margaret, please note that Sherri and Tammy are absent this evening. First item is to approve the agenda for tonight, and we're going to modify it. Going to remove item 11.25 from the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Well, we should, again, recognize and thank all the people that are returning. I think we just got another one, Mrs. Crowe, and so, again, thank you for the many, many years of service.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, we have second reading of our policies. Go under the consent agenda, or do we approve those separately?
They've been approved under the consent agenda already, yes. So you just go to reports. Just go to reports, I think.
Policy?
The only thing we added to the policy on animals in the schools is that we added a clause for service animals.
Southwest Metro?
We had our meeting this past Tuesday. It was a full meeting, in terms of covering a lot of ground. This is our last meeting for the summer. We will not meet in June and July, but we will resume our meetings in August. At our meeting, we had a report from one of our successful programs, the New Beginnings Program, and that is a program for young women who have had a child or are expecting a child. It's a program that allows them to stay in school. It teaches them child rearing practices and does a lot of other good things for them and their child as well. So it's a very good program, and we had a very nice report on it. Then also, you can put this on your calendars if you'd like. The Southwest Metro will be sponsoring a bus tour on September the 16th for any board members or administrators from our member districts to see the different programs and look at the different locations of those programs in September. So if any of you folks as board members or administrators would like to participate in that bus tour, it will occur on the 16th of September. And then we had a number of action items as well. We had several terminations of probationary teachers. We also had a sabbatical that was denied to a teacher, or I should say, a social worker, I believe. We approved the grant that was given to us by the Purpitch Arts Grant for the, I'm not quite sure on the amount, but it was a nice amount, for sure. We approved the contract with Carver County. They provide us with the School Resource Officer for our school district. And we approved the teacher development and evaluation plan, very much like the one that we have in our district, but with some changes because being a special type of a district like Southwest Metro is, there are some differences that occur because of the great number of different programs and different things that happen within those programs. And finally, we approved an AgStar Fund Rural American Grant, and that was to the program that we have in our district that encourages agricultural experiences and agricultural vocations. So that's a very good grant to receive from AgStar. So it was a busy, busy evening, Tuesday.
You mentioned you denied a sabbatical. Is there ever a time that you approve a sabbatical at the Mayor's Secretary's Apprehension?
We have it in our policies that we can grant one at the discretion of the board.
Okay.
Thank you. You have anything for CPAC?
There was no CPAC meeting. The CPAC meetings are concluded for the year.
Anything for Community Ed?
Yes, we are meeting on Thursday at 6:00, which would be the 29th, and we'll be finalizing the autumn booklet and the offerings for the fall. So if anybody has any suggestions or questions or requests, they should get ahold of me. And the other thing I'd like to throw out is, it's springtime, our kids are doing real well in athletics, and they're only kids once. They need the support of people, and actually, they have played real well, softball and baseball and tennis and track and whoever else is still going. And you can consult with New Prague Times, Charlie Keier does a good job of telling when the events are.
Thank you. Superintendent updates?
Yes, what I have on the screen right now is for our facility study. We're going to be sending this out tomorrow, a press release. We'll get it to KCheck and, of course, the New Prague Times. We'll get it on social media and then also put it on our website, and that will be the task force application form. And what we want is to get a, you know, a very diverse group of people on this task force to find out what the needs are of our facilities after listening to the results from the demographic study, really taking a look at the report that will come next fall on the analysis of all of our facilities. But we want, you know, people to be represented of all ages and of all communities within this district. I have gone around and presented and just informed all of our teachers and staff in all the buildings, ranging from early childhood, each of the elementaries, to the middle school. In fact, tomorrow's my last presentation with the high school staff. And I'm doing that, too, is if they get questions from community members or parents, they'll be able to answer the questions and just going over what the process is. And just as a review for all of you or people watching on TV, the first step is, right now, we're doing a demographic study by Hazel Reinhardt, the former state demographer, and we should be getting the results at our next board meeting on June 23rd. Throughout the summer, we've got World Architect doing an analysis of, just ongoing, taking a look at the 2008 report and doing an ongoing analysis of our buildings and internally and externally on the grounds also. And we'll be getting that report. So those two reports will come first for our task force. On the application form, I've got the six dates. There are six Wednesdays that go from September to December when we're going to meet, in fact, I should say November. So we're in about a three-month span. We'll have six meetings, be on Wednesdays going from 6:30 and ending at 8:30. So we want people that are interested in doing this, that are going to look into, have that broad perspective on what the needs of our district are, to apply for that, to be on that task force. And like I said, we want a very diverse group and people that can have a broad perspective on seeing what the needs are.
And Tim, I'm sure that part of this will include members from all the communities that we have in our district to give a good view of the different locations that we have in our district as well.
That's right. That's why I want diversity, and it's going to be mainly community people. It's going to, we'll have school district, a few school district people, but very few. The school district people that will be present in the meetings will be for resource only. But we'll have balance between Lonsdale, Elko, New Market, and New Prague, along with anywhere in between. And like I said, people from all ages, from young parents to middle-aged to seniors, everything. So looking forward to get going in with that process, really excited about that and, you know, let them take a look at it and sort of drive the recommendation for you as a school board to make that decision on where we go from here.
Is World going to be present, and then they're going to do a summary of those six meetings, I assume, for us?
Yep, yep. They'll help facilitate the meetings, yep. And then, just the other update I just want to mention, I met with our attorneys with, looking at doing a settlement with the vendors that originally did our windows for Ravenstream Elementary and Eagleview Elementary last week, and really nothing came about of it so far. There might be other people brought forward in this litigation, so the arbitration was going to be later in June, but they might move it back to late July or early August. I haven't got the arbitration dates yet right now. That's still being worked out. But if that is the case, when we have hard rains right now, we have water coming in at Ravenstream and Eagleview, so we might have to do some patch up or put a Band-Aid on, I shouldn't say Band-Aid, but patch up some, we might have to do some work on our own just heading into next school year because it doesn't look like, obviously, we're going to get that done in time. So I just want everyone to know about that, and the attorneys will be sending, they'll be sending me an email within the next week that I'll share with you as a board, let you know exactly where we're at with things. So that's it for updates. Good news, I'll just take off what Don DeVorek was talking about with spring sports. It is, we had a very successful winter season. The spring season for activities and athletics, baseball is in the winner's bracket final. They'll play this Saturday against Eden Prairie. A wonderful story, a team that went 1-15 last year is now 19-2, set a school conference record for wins, won the Minnesota Conference Trophy, and like I said, are undefeated in section play right now. And we had standing room-only crowds at, over at Memorial Park this past week, and so really neat. Girls softball is in the, also in the section finals tonight. They were leading 5-0 after four innings and no hitter going, so very good chance for them to go on to state. Received a report today, girls golf was leading after nine holes in this section tournament, and boys golf was in third place and after the first round. They have two rounds today and then again next Tuesday, so both boys and girls golf. So that's very exciting. We've got this Thursday, we've got the choir concert last week. I attended the band concert. It was just excellent. We also had our honors banquet. I think we gave out over $55,000 in local scholarships, $31,000 of that from the Educational Don mentioned about retirement. Celebrate our retirees. We've got Creeks Bend this Thursday. Social hour begins at 4:30 with a program starting at 5:00. Encourage all of you to attend that. And then, obviously, a week from Friday, we have our last-day celebration with our entire district staff. So this week, next week, we're winding up things, and we've got graduation a week from Friday, and our high school staff, under the direction of Lonnie Seifert, have done a great job planning on that. We've got 18 teachers that are going to be walking in town. It's a district celebration. Lonnie's changed a little bit. We all have representatives from each of the elementary schools, including our Catholic schools. And we've got 15, 15 parents that are teachers that have their kids graduating this year. So it's going to be a pretty neat night, and I guess that's it. So a lot of good things happening and really proud of, again, like I said, the success that we're having with our kids that are here at New Prague School District.
I'd like to echo the band concert last week. It was very, very good, and I would like to commend the seniors. That is the most seniors that we have ever had that stick through it the whole way.
Yep. Thanks, Don, for reemphasizing that. That, just so you know, that is the first class that came through when we added fifth grade band.
Oh.
They were our fifth-grade band students. And Julie Slater, our elementary band director, reminded me of that before the concert. So that says something about back, how many years ago is that, seven, eight years, whenever we, you know, you made that commitment to add elementary band, you see in the success payoff. And marching band is going now. They're practicing, getting ready for the summer. It's the first time it's a true co-curricular activity, so we're really excited about that, and I think it's only going to get better and better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Onto our action items. First item is the world's best workforce.
Good evening, Board, and Superintendent Ditburner and community members. Couple weeks ago in the work session, we talked about the world's best workforce, so I'm going to review it tonight very quickly to go over what the New Prague School District has put together to meet the letter of the law from our legislature last year. What is the world's best workforce? It was a bill that was passed in 2013, last year, to ensure that every school district in the state is making strides to increase student performance. What our school district needed to do was to provide a plan, a strategic plan. It is what I would call the academic portion of our entire district strategic plan. It's very concentrated on five specific areas, which I do have written down. I'll read those off. All children are ready for school, so that is the pre-K emphasis, our preschools. All third graders can read at grade level. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are career-ready for college. And all students graduate from high school. Those are the five areas that our entire district administration, teaching staff, everybody within the district office will be working towards, which we currently do, of course, but are the big five that the Department of Education, our legislation, has said we must meet those, continue to work on them, set goals, work towards those goals, and provide data to the Department of Education once a year, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. How did we build the world's best workforce? Put together a team of professionals, under the direction of Superintendent Ditburner, gathered specific information about our entire district. We reviewed our district's strategic plan to make sure that it followed our mission, vision, and values, so that we put the world's best workforce together. It is a very comprehensive academic package where it puts all of our data into the same specific area. And that is something that we did not normally have. So I'm very excited about what our document looks like, and we'll get to that here at the end. But if you are a community member and you go on our website, once our new website is up, the world's best workforce will be on there. You'll be able to sift through it quite easily, take a look at a lot of our student data, our district data, and you'll be able to answer a lot of questions, people from outside the community. Every single school district within the state of Minnesota is mandated to have this in place this year. We interviewed a lot of district administrators and practitioners from within the district to find out our common practices that were taking place, to see if there were any holes or any areas within our curriculum, our instruction, day-to-day operations that we were potentially missing. We took a lot of that data, and we put it specifically into the world's best workforce, and we did that over a longitudinal time, about three years. That way, we can see, especially in the areas where it may be racial or special education or some of those areas, if we see any type of area where we're not maybe performing at the highest level. Over a three-year longitudinal study, we can see if there was just a blip or if we do truly have a decrease in some specific areas. We polled our district and our building goals to make sure that we are following exactly what it is that starts with our strategic plan, down to the board goals, district goals, down to our building goals, and into the classroom, and they all must align. We compiled all of our district committees, again, really taking a very large snapshot of our entire district and the work that is done on a day-to-day basis. We looked at the roles and responsibilities of these committees and the members that were on them. And then one of the pieces was, we also had to have an advisory committee. So we put together, and actually, we joined with our district curriculum committee, and that was something that even the Department of Education said, don't recreate another committee if you have something that your district is represented by teachers, parents, community members, which is our district advisory committee. We just basically renamed that and paired that with our district curriculum advisory committee, and now we utilize the world's best workforce within that current committee also. One of the two people that I worked with very closely, or we worked together with, was Michelle Chuka, who is a special education coordinator, and also Renee Bussi, who is one of our instructional coaches. And both of them were very influential in helping us pull together a lot of that data. And I think it was Michelle, and I put this in our notes here, what we did was took a scattered puzzle and put it into one place. And I thought that kind of summed up what it was, because for a number of months, we were out in the buildings gathering information, going on our websites, just picking up a lot of different, you know, topics of things that we put together on paper and put them all into one place. So it was actually kind of fun, to be very honest with you, and it gives you a very clear picture of what the school district, how well we do. We thought, at first, it was a very large project, and I thought, oh my gosh, how are we going to do this? And the more we worked on it and we continued to gather information, the more we realized we got a lot of really good things going on in our school district, and we're doing a very good job. Always room for improvement, but there's definitely been no stone unturned when it comes to teaching and learning. Why in Minnesota now? This slide is from the Department of Education. This is how they are advertising why the world's best workforce. I won't specifically read each one of these, but it does have to do with college and career readiness. It has to do with preparing our students for the century above and beyond us and getting our kids really acclimated and ready for what comes after high school. They're saying, of course, many of the jobs are college and/or post-secondary driven after high school. I know Mr. Seifert, Mr. Garnis, and the counseling staff are working very hard, you know, with our classes and with the kids specifically, and making sure that their needs are being met as best as possible to prepare them for the college and post-secondary options after high school. How will we measure our progress? So we've done all this work, we've put all this information from our district in one place, now what? Every single year, we want to measure the progress of our school district. We want to see if our goals and our objectives for the current year are working, are the things that we're doing, are the instruction, the curriculum that we're putting into place, are they working? Are the kids learning? So by creating our own world's best workforce plan that aligns to both our curriculum and our instruction plan and also our district strategic plan, so that students are college and career-ready, our success will be measured by, and there are more, but NWA or MAP tests, closing the gap by student achievement groups, our MCA scores, college entrance exams, and other formal and informal testing and data submissions by our school district. Those things are always being looked at by our district administration and by our teachers, and that's very important that we do measure that progress. As a school board, what we're asking you tonight is basically three to four different things. The first one has been done to establish an advisory committee. At this time, as I had said, we have joined together with the Curriculum Advisory Board and working with them. So that is a voice for any community members, teachers, parents, to get on that board and to review, to talk about, to listen, to give feedback, and to understand our world's best workforce and what it is our district is doing in that area. Once a year in the fall, by October 1st, we as a school district need to put together and present an annual report. And I would ask that we would be able to post and present that at our school board meeting in the fall, and that basically would go over how our year has gone. And that may be something that Mr. Ditburner, myself, you know, we kind of go over and cover some of the goals that we had throughout the year, and have we reached them? If so, you know, how did we show the progress? Are there areas that we're going to continue to work on? Just kind of an annual report. By October 1st, we need to submit a summary report to the Department of Education and then hold annual public meetings for input, and that can always happen here at the school board meeting, and then also our advisory committee. And for your guys' reading, a pleasure I put to visit the district's world best workforce, and I have information there, and I would just like to very quickly show the viewers at home what the world's best workforce looks like. And again, I would like to say, we currently are working on the new district website, and once that new district website is completed, there will be a tab on there for world's best workforce, the strategic academic plan. And I won't go through anything specific, but as people go out on our district website here in about another month to two months, when the new website is completed, this is what it will look like. It will talk about the world's best workforce, and something on the left-hand side will scroll down, as you can see, our welcome, and all the way down, we have a large number of different headings. And I'll just read a couple here. District and school goals, student progress and growth monitoring, strategies for improving curriculum and instruction and student achievement, programming to improve student achievement, community satisfaction. Our survey, parent survey, that will be going out here next week, will be placed into this document. So this is really our holding pin for all of the information surrounding academics for our school district. I realize it went rather quickly, but I wanted to give you a very brief synopsis of the world's best workforce, if anybody had any questions at this time.
When you talk about presenting it in an open meeting to the public, would you want to be somewhere where there'd be questions and answers to the public or just a presentation like this format?
Well, I think a presentation like this, you know, which, then hopefully, we've got some people that are either at the meeting or are going to watch it on TV, and we will definitely, once it is up on the website, there will be names and numbers associated with it. So if anybody has any questions, they can contact us. And then also, the advisory committee, our curriculum and the world's best workforce, we definitely want to bring as many people in as we possibly can and make that group as large as we possibly can, so we can get the voice of the community and our parents.
One thing, Tony, that we talked about at our work session was, this was a mandate from the legislature to come up with this. And as so often happens with mandates from the legislature, there was no funding that went along with it. We were to do it with the funding that we have right from within our own district. So no extra money was given to us for this, but we still accomplished the goal or the directive of this world's best workforce through working with you and other people in the district.
That is correct, Denny, and I'll be very honest with you. The work that was done was very professional. We had a number of people who helped me with Renee Bussi, Michelle Chuka, all of our district administration. We sat down with them more than once, and also leaders from within their buildings to help us gather that data. We had secretarial help. We had, I mean, Mr. Ditburner was involved. We had everybody involved, and the process did take a little while, but it was very smooth, and I do believe we learned a lot about our district through that.
As you remember, you know, Tony was Director of Special Services, and this past summer moved him to Director of Educational Services, and two of his big charges were to do this, world's best workforce, and again, we were able to do it by just shuffling the deck without adding any administrative personnel or support personnel. And the other thing will be on June 23. And the other thing will be on June 23rd, you'll get a recommendation on the new teacher evaluation plan, which is another thing. It's basically an unfunded mandate. Unless you're a Q-COMP district where you're getting extra funding, we do get one-time funding for next year for the teacher, but it's not ongoing. But, a lot of schools that do have Q-COMP are hiring three, four, five, six people to help do the teacher performance reviews and professional growth models. But, whether it's that or what Tony did here, it takes, took a long time, took all year, a lot of meetings, a lot of collaboration, but as you can see, he got it done, and that's why I hired him to do the job, because I know he'd get it done, and done in a very professional way. So, thank you, Tony, for doing this.
So, do we need a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the world's best workforce.
I'll second. I'll second.
Any other discussion?
I just think it was very well done, and just a good example, again, of how we get things done in a good manner without spending a lot of extra money on personnel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. The certification of district population.
Okay, there are a couple of attachments to this agenda item. Basically, we're asking you to certify our district population at eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-three. We've used this, we use the same methodology we have used prior, looking at building permits and assuming so many members per household. And we need to send a letter off to the state demographer, and this is used for community education funding purposes.
You'll have to change the letter to five-zero, certify, for the vote.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Letter in the morning. Any questions at all?
I'm pretty standard.
Very much so.
Yeah, someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the district, certification of district population.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Next, health and safety.
Yes, this is another annual requirement for MD and for us to be able to levy for health and safety, approved health and safety projects. You have a, an estimated budget summary for three fiscal years, this year, next year, and the year after. We actually can put projects on their website up to two years in advance. So, just asking you to approve the expenditure summary, or the budget summary, and then as well as approve no change in the health and safety policy, which was adopted on June
I'll make a motion to approve the health and safety policy.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want a separate one for the budget?
Um, yes, please.
Motion to approve the health and safety budget?
I'll second it. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, are you still talking on this one, Sandy? The gymnastics building lease?
Yes, I had talked to the board several months ago about the improvements that are being made to the gymnastics building that we hold, excuse me, activities at. And basically, the first document here is a new lease for 10 years. It's a regular lease for 10 years in return for participating in the improvement efforts. Financially, they have agreed to freeze our annual lease costs up for 10 years. So, this first agreement is to, shows that we are freezing our lease costs for 10 years. The second agenda item is the addendum, and the addendum is for five years, and that is the agreement where we will pay for our part of the improvement, improvements to the gymnastics center. So, I need both of them approved. Our attorney has looked at them, reviewed them, and has okayed them, as well as on the gymnastics side as well.
How is the percentage determined for our part?
We basically had, we took, we needed a sprinkler system. I might have to go get my notes here, just a second, 'cause I didn't bring them up here. We are gonna be, we are paying for the two changing rooms and, for competitors and the sprinkler system. Those were our needs, and that's what we paid for. The entire project is almost $200,000, and our part is about $56,500.
Should we just make a motion?
Do them both?
Yeah, do we do them both at once? Let's see, we can't.
I think so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the gymnastics building lease agreement and the addendum regarding the lease of the gymnastics building.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Next, we have a mowing agreement with the city of Elko New Market.
Yes, the city of Elko New Market approached us a while back to see if we would be willing to let them do the mowing of our fields and maintaining of our fields out in Elko New Market. And so, Craig and Mr. Dipburner, Craig Most and Mr. Dipburner met with them, and we have agreed to a one-year joint powers agreement, just on a trial basis, where we will pay them approximately $4,000. It's so much per time, so we'll have to see how many times it's mowed. And the thing that we get out of it is that basically, right now, our mowing equipment and lawn care equipment at Eagleview have to sit, has to set outside. So, we'll be able to lessen the amount of equipment setting outside, transfer that equipment here, so we have to move our equipment within the New Prague city less. So, that's how, how we benefit, and will also obviously save us time of our custodians. So, it's a one-year trial to see how it works. And, Mr. Dipburner, do you have any?
It's, and it has been approved by Elko's New Market City Council already.
I don't have it to sign. They're sending me hard copies today, so I'll have it to sign sometime next week.
It just kind of makes sense to do this, doesn't it?
Yeah. We sat down with them, and they're very easy to work with, and we'll, it's, like I said, it's a one-year agreement. We'll evaluate it after one year, and if it's still working for both, both will continue. If not, we have to make some changes or discontinue it, we will.
I'll make the motion to approve the mowing agreement with the city of Elko New Market.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. The dental self-insurance plan.
Yes, thank you. I did discuss this at the May workshop a couple of weeks ago, and we are proposing to change our dental insurance plan from fully funded to self-funded. Basically, it will save the district, or the employees, $23,000 per year in fixed costs. And what we do basically is we collect the premiums from employees and from the district, put it into a separate bank account, and hire a third-party administrator to process the claims, and then we pay the claims out of that same account. This is a very easy insurance to self-fund because of the fact that the costs are pretty known, there's maximum, and it's pretty, pretty easy to determine what our costs would be. And our benefits consultant is recommending we do this. This is, I did it at a past district, and it really worked well. It gives the district and employees a lot of flexibility as to how to adjust premiums. It's a very, very good thing. So, we just need your approval to do that, and then we'll move forward. The employees will notice no difference at all. They'll have the same cards, the same everything, no difference at all for the employees. Our benefits committee has also approved this.
And it doesn't change the cost to the district either, correct?
No, I mean, we had a, no, absolutely not. We had a small increase of 2%, but our contribution didn't change because it's in negotiating
I'll make a motion to approve the dental self-insurance plan.
Next. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Next, we have a few handbook changes for the middle school and the high school. Tim, was there anything you wanted to point out with this?
No, I think they're, it's pretty self-explanatory, if anyone has any question.
I just have a question. How often do we do lockdowns? How often do you practice lockdowns? You have to, is there a requirement or?
Yeah, I believe it's five, five fire drills and five lockdowns.
Do we meet them?
Oh, guys, yes. We, I know there was an article in the Star Tribune about schools not doing that. Our principals are very good about that. It's nothing you mess around with. I, when I read that article, I just, I couldn't believe that.
I was surprised, too, and some of them were only at two, I think, a year.
We work with the police department, all the schools do, and the staff, I mean, I'll go back to the middle school, what happened last year. Our response, how it went as well as it could've gone, was basically because of the training that's been done and from the practices. So, we get those done, and we do them all settings, and it's a very positive thing, so.
Kind of sad you have to do them, but nice when it all works out.
Yep, you gotta, you gotta, you know, it's very important to practice them.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the student handbook changes for 2014-15 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Next, we need to have a resolution read for the renewal of Minnesota State High School League membership.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. And by the way, this is something that's done every year. We have to renew our membership in the State High School League and/or continue to be members of it. Be resolved that the governing board of District 721, County of Scott, State of Minnesota delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by the Minnesota statutes. Be it further resolved that New Prague High School is authorized by this, the governing board of this district, to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League. And along with that, we also are obligated to endorse Policy 506, which is the student discipline policy that goes along with membership in this Minnesota State High School League resolution. How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Item passes.
Next, we have the New Prague Area Education Foundation grants that we need to officially approve. Do you have something to read for that, Danny?
Uh, not for the, I don't, Lee, that's a resolution, I don't think.
Right, because we receive these grants and several pieces over the year. Basically, we just approve these grants, and then Jane will come and give a summary, hopefully, at the end of the year. So, the two grants are before you, total of $2,017.50.
I'll make a motion to approve the grants from the New Prague Area Education Foundation.
Second. I guess I'll just summarize what they were. There's one for a classroom keyboard at Falcon Ridge, and then at all three elementary schools, outdoor learning experiences. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Next, we have a resolution to approve the termination and non-renewal of Katie Meyer.
At this time, I'll consider a motion to consider the non-renewal of the teaching contract.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following non-renewal of teacher contract. It is recommended that the board terminate the non-tenured contract of Katie Meyer as per the resolution below. Whereas Katie Meyer is a probationary teacher in Independent School District 721, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Number 721, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Katie Meyer, a probationary teacher in this district, is hereby terminated at the close of the current school year. Be it resolved that a written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of her contract. How do you vote on this, Kitten?
Yes.
This has nothing to do with the person involved, and I've asked this before. This gets kind of late. Isn't this within our timeline?
We have to do it by the end of June.
Did that get moved back from before?
I, I think, Don, back in our days, it was a lot earlier, but it has been moved back.
Oh, okay.
I think, yeah. Our discussions, or I should say, my discussions with the principals are, we want to do it as early as we can, but we have to be certain, and, and there's been conversations with teachers. I mean, it's not like when it finally gets to the board level, that's what it is, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
How do you vote on this, Kitten?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes. Item passes.
Next, we have a bunch of memorandum of understandings for employees, and we're just gonna do them all as one motion, and I'll just read each of their names if someone wants to make a motion to approve the...
And we're taking one of...
You want me to read them now?
Yeah, and then George Gannier will not be part of it.
So, we have Tony Boothie, Nancy Dubois, Bob Foye Fox, Amy Johnson, Sandy Lynn, Cheryl Malika Kolash, Craig Most, Greg Pint, Lana Puffer, Brad Skogarby, Tim DeVorock, Jeff Looney, Mark Soller, Arlene Stika, Dara Berksrock, Paul Gezen, Dorian Most, Jody Lambrecht, Sandy Eaton, Sue Tupi, Sheila Hanan, Liz Brujek, and Margaret Stika.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandums of understanding for each of those individuals.
I'll second it.
I have a couple of questions. This understanding of memorandum will be for this past year, and if they are still around for next year, it's for next year also?
Right, there were several employees on that list that are either retiring or not gonna be, not gonna be in the district next year. So, basically, we just made it for one year, and then they do not need a contract for the following year.
But the other ones do?
Yes.
Okay, now I have the other question. On the lead mechanic, we had, we had discussed this before. Does that one have to be pulled out and voted on separately without me?
Um, you know, it would be probably nice to recuse yourself from that because there's a relationship there. So, I guess, Kitten, if you'd like to, I guess I forgot about that. Thank you, Don.
Well, Don could, Don could also do this. He could say that he approves them with the exception of abstaining from the one.
I would rather do it the other way.
Okay.
You'd rather do two separate motions?
Do, Tim, separately, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, this will be a motion for...
I'll amend the motion to include all the memorandums of understanding except the one that has Tim DeVor Jacques in it.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, five-zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Tim DeVor Jacques.
I'll second it.
And I would like to abstain by, because of whatever the rules are on this matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, four-zero. Finally, we have our budget presentation. First reading.
Yes, thank you. The, I've placed a hard copy of the budget in front of you. We're having a difficult time scanning it and posting it to Board Doc, so Margaret and I will keep working on that and hopefully get that updated to the website. But the presentation, the capital budget, and the deferred maintenance plan are all on the website. I'm looking at just the general fund tonight. The other funds, Fund 2, 4, 6, and 7, I'm gonna wait with. We had a couple of pieces that we weren't clear on yet, especially some of the revenue changes that were just passed at the legislature. So, we need a little bit more time to, to deal with those. Basically, fiscal year 13-14 projected actual for the unassigned fund balance. Our budgeted gain was $600,000. I'm anticipating our gain will be about double that of 1.2 million, up to 8.3 million, and that's a fund balance of almost 26%. The reason for that is we expect to come in about 1% under budget for expenditures. We usually come in lower than... than that, uh, usually like two, two to three percent. However, utilities this year with the tough winter, just snow removal alone, kinda blew the, blew the budget away. We also had a lot of repair projects that were very unusual this year, as well as all of our security equipment that we put in last, last fall. Um, and then I expect to come in just a slightly over budget on the revenue piece. However, the special ed revenue is, as I always say, is very difficult to project, and they don't have a real good, uh, run yet at the state on what that's going to be. So I'm always, I always try to be very conservative in the revenue. So the fourteen, fifteen preliminary budget, excuse me, the unassigned fund, I have revenues increasing about two point seven percent, expenditures about seven point two percent. Um, some of this is due to one-time expenditures, um, uh, which I'll, I'll go over a little bit. The total general fund, the revenue's increasing three point four, and expenditures seven point one. Here's some key changes in the expenditures. We have staffing, which all, all of the board has been briefed before, either in, uh, board meetings or, uh, work sessions. The ALC is gonna have a slight decrease in their teaching FTE. The high school, we're increasing four and a half FTE, including that dean of students. The elementary schools, in addition to bringing all in, in all the kindergarten teachers, uh, we are gonna have a net decrease of one point oh FTE. Middle school, we're increasing music point two FTE. And then, of course, this includes all the district-level organization changes as presented in prior meetings. The benefits, uh, basically, we're increasing TRA by a half a percent again, and, uh, that is a seven percent increase. Um, and then, of course, we have our health insurance increases that are standard. Other items, um, again, I'm including a two hundred thousand contingency. I also am including, uh, Jerry, the seventy-five thousand dollars to commit to future turf replacement. I worked with WOLD, and if we, um, commit seventy-five thousand dollars a year, we should be good, uh, to replace when it, it comes time to replace. You'll be getting a, um, a, uh, a resolution next, in June to, uh, commit those funds. We also have the Power for Learning Initiative funding, and again, even though those costs, uh, the lease costs are, are increased, we do have lower computer replacement costs, we can decrease our curriculum by twenty-five percent, and we are eliminating the teacher incentive program, the TIP program. We also have additional gymnastic lease payments that you just approved, um, with that addendum. We have to eliminate the building and principal chargebacks for K extra. We were able to always charge some time back to that fund for our principals and some of our buildings. We won't be able to do that. We have, uh, additional school cars per the plan that I presented to you in February, I believe. Um, along with our, um, new navigation system, maps, and the Wi-Fi, uh, service on our buses, we're gonna have, um, hot, we need hotspot, hotspot service for our internet services on the buses. We have a minibus we are buying for special education, and we have the infinite campus student registration model, which I have been talking with you about, which should, which we will be implementing next year. Yes, Don?
Is that our third minibus?
Yes. Third minibus. Yep. What we're able to do with the minibuses is it can do the work of two vans, plus there's a lot better equipment on the bus. So, yeah, it's a, it's a very positive thing. The revenue, basically, I'm projecting revenue at the same level that I shared with you in November of two thousand thirteen. Uh, we're up, um, twenty eight EMs. I, I think it's gonna be higher. We're looking at some of the numbers, but I'm sticking with my projections. And state funding, we're including a one point nine percent formula increase, um, a hundred and three dollars, which includes the twenty-five dollar per ADM recently signed into law. Um, two percent in special education funding, again, very difficult to project. They're al, they're actually exchanging some of the formulas, and I'm going to a training tomorrow to better understand those formulas. We also received an additional three hundred and two dollars per licensed staff FTE for teacher evaluation. That's gonna be included in staff development.
Is that the one-time money?
Yep.
Yep. And flat literacy aid. Federal funds, um, this is not included in this budget because we just found out just a couple of days ago, but our title fund, fund, Title One funds have decreased by, in half. Uh, three or four years ago, when I started, they unexpectedly doubled, and unfortunately, I was never able to get to the bottom as to why they doubled. Um, it's a very complicated formula at the state, and they weren't able to tell me. And my fear was that, well, they could go down in half again, and, and they did. Um, and they could decrease even further. But I'll include those changes in the June twenty-third budget. And then the special ed, uh, federal funds are not yet determined for next year, but I assumed a flat allocation. So the unassigned general fund budget basically shows, um, a, a loss of a little over three hundred thousand dollars. Of course, that is, um, you know, projecting revenue conservatively and expenditures, expenditures conservatively as well. And so our unassigned fund balance would be about eight point one million at the end of next year with a non-spendable, so a net unassigned fund balance of eight million, which is twenty-three point two percent. Then we have all restricted and committed funds. Um, health and safety, that's up and down all the time because of the timing of the levies. Operating capital, we expect a slight gain next year. Um, this year, we had a lot of projects in operating capital. Deferred maintenance, we expect to, expect to go up next year. Gifted and talented, basically about staying the same, going down slightly. Safe schools, we're gonna start out, the safe schools was zero this year because of all the initiatives we had last fall. So we hope to start building that fund balance. Staff development should be about flat, and that includes that new funding. Uh, we have several, um, one-time initiatives in staff development that we can fund, um, this year out of that, next year out of that. Then we have severance, which is always very unpredictable as far as, um, who will retire and when. Um, and then we have the turf replacement. The deferred maintenance plan is posted to the website. Basically, I just update this. Craig and, Craig Most and I update this from year to year. Um, the main purpose is to document for planning, um, and this will obviously be reviewed, um, as part of the facilities task force this fall. The capital.
For the deferred maintenance, I was noticing, and you mentioned it in here, how it kinda goes negative in a few years. How do we, how do you fix that problem? Do you have to pull money from a general fund, or is that something where you levy for those big expenses?
Good question. Yes, either, um, one option is always taking it from the general fund. Um, however, there is a, a pretty large move at the legislature to, right now, the ten largest school districts in the state can levy for approved, um, facility deferred maintenance projects. And there's a, quite a large move at the state level to allow all districts to do that. It would basically require us to have a capital plan, which we do already have, and get those, um, projects approved, and then we could, um, levy some more for those. Um, we also will look at this as part of our task force, obviously, because we have ongoing deferred maintenance needs. So there could be some recommendations out of the task force that would address some of the financial issues as well.
Thanks.
Uh, the capital plan is also posted to the website. Basically, we have discretionary projects of only about a hundred and forty thousand this year. We tried to cut that down because of some of the demands on our capital funds, um, the last couple of years. And the total capital budget is about, just almost nine hundred thousand dollars. And again, just a reminder on the ten-year capital plan, um, it includes things like special street assessments, all the buildings and grounds, annual allocations, transportation. We have to buy two buses a year. We have, um, building allocations and approved projects. And then the, on the tech, um, tech side, we have annual allocations as well for software maintenance, the data warehouse. We have a computer replacement cycle, although that's gone down quite a bit, obviously. We still have to, um, put that in, and then again, we have the approved projects, which are in the capital plan that's posted to the website.
Do we have a separate one, do we have a separate one for roofs, for, uh, buildings?
Roofs is part of the deferred maintenance plan.
Is part of that.
Yes. Um, again, we have this new phone system, um, that is not in any of the projections. Again, I, I did talk with WOLD, and they will be including that. That is part of a facility. That's part of a building. Um, so it will be looked at during the, the, during the facility, um, task force as well. So the next step is on June twenty-third, I'll bring a preliminary budget for approval. Uh, it will include all the special funds. Um, in October, we'll get the audit results, and December, we'll have a, I'll have a final budget based on the staffing, um, and the expenditures we have this fall, and I'll have an updated five-year projection at that time as well. But tonight, basically, you know, ask any questions, and, um, but it will not be finally approved until June twenty-third.
Thank you.
Questions?
Hey. Lots of numbers.
Yeah, I know, I know.
A lot of information, and like you say, it's preliminary, so it's our first look at it, and, um, it looks good at, at this onset.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We still have a good balance at the end of it, so that's always good.
Yes, always look at your fund balance.
You just wanna know if it's okay, right? Yeah. Thank you.
A lot better than one percent fund balance going back a few years, so.
Or you need to get a loan. Now, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.